Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'll call the March 21st Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
That never happened before.
We have a couple of changes to the agenda. Our Board of Health Steering Committee genetically altered mice to combat Lyme's Disease Project update. They couldn't get here, so we'll be rescheduling that. There's a couple of additional announcements as Lauren here? Oh, yeah, there she is.
We asked our Energy Coordinator, Lauren Sinatra, to give us a briefing on a recent competitive bid we did.
Yes, regarding our municipal aggregation, the Nantucket Power Choice Program. So after three times going out to bid, I'm very pleased to announce that starting in May, participants currently enrolled in the Nantucket Power Choice Municipal Aggregation Program will see a decrease in their electric rate. Earlier this month, the Town's Evaluation Committee procured a new supply contract with Direct Energy for 9.05 cents for 24 months, which will take effect with May meter readings. The new transition will be seamless for everybody who's currently in the program. And the price for the Nantucket Power Choice Green, which is the 100% renewable supply option, is 9.55 cents a kilowatt hour. Both options are less than National Grid's current basic service and also their proposed basic service rate for the summer, which was just announced today. So National Grid has announced for residents from the months of May through October a rate of 10.87 cents. Commercial accounts will be 10.182 cents. For residents, it's a 1.82 cent difference, which translates to 17% savings for the next six months. Our new rate also includes our solar rebate adder, so that ensures that we continue that program to incentivize local solar and energy storage systems in the future. So as mentioned, all current program participants will be automatically enrolled into the new rate. It'll be seamless. The only change they will see, starting as of May meter rates, is Direct Energy instead of Agira and instead of 9.13 cents, a rate of 9.05 cents unless they choose the premium green product. So for anyone who is not active in the program now but wishes to enroll, please contact me or visit our program website, which is masspowerchoice.com/Nantucket. And just a reminder, customers can opt in or out at any time without a penalty. Our program website has been updated with all the new details and we'll be releasing a press release and other program announcements within the next two weeks or so. So with that, any questions? Otherwise, very good news for all rate pairs in Nantucket. Our first supply contract with Agira has resulted to date of nearly $2 million of savings for our local residents and businesses.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you. Just so, I bid electricity for my businesses a couple, you know, four or five years ago and the rates were nowhere as good as these are. We were in a different climate then, but this is, people that are on TV and are listening should absolutely 100% get on board. Like, you guys are doing a lot of good work and it's, you know, it's a lot of money.
It was exceptionally low rate from a very qualified supplier, so we locked in for the longest term as possible and I'm confident it will result in savings across that contract term, so we're thrilled. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren, and I really want to thank Lauren too. She is on top of this kind of thing all the time and she is a great advocate for the town, so thank you. Rob McNeil, our DPW Director, is going to give a quick update about the South Beach Street roadwork restoration and timing. And also, Rob, maybe you could just quickly go over the community meeting? Did that happen last Thursday?
Yes, it did. So we had five people show up at the follow-up meeting, which was a good thing. There was actually still some questions, but I think it spoke to the professional nature of what's happened since the sewer force main break. And I think that with all the people involved and getting the word out, communication has been strong and I think people's questions have mostly been answered. So with that, the update to South Beach Street is the contractor has been out. Starting this past Monday, they got right to work relaying granite curb work. And right now, with the weather, they're assuming to remobilize likely Friday to pick up where they've left off and start doing brick layment. So we're making progress, you'll see in the next couple of weeks, assuming the weather holds. They're going to make a lot more, a lot more progress. We've been able to relocate the blocks from Easton Street all the way down to the C Street location. That was a request, actually, that came out of the community outreach meeting from the owners over at Lola as they start to get their building back up and running. So it kind of frees up that other side of South Beach Street that's accessible. Working together with the manager's office to get the reverse truck route in place, I believe, starting next week. Signage will commence next Monday to allow folks to be moving boats down to the boat launch on Harborview, so they'll be able to bring boats on trailers down the reverse truck route on Cliff Road and Easton Street. So there'll be some areas that'll be closed off to parking.
And how long do you envision that until, until South Beach?
Until South Beach is accessible. So right now, we're shooting for Daffodil weekend.
Yeah, which if it hits that, that would be great.
Any questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention one more thing that came to my attention. Immediately after the incident at the African Meeting House, the Executive Committee of NARAB, the Nantucket Association of Real Estate Brokers, convened and unanimously donated the funding to do the necessary repairs. And I just, Ken Bogrand made that happen and I was just really impressed by it and it really received a lot of extremely positive comments from the entire real estate community. This is the public comment portion of our agenda. For anything otherwise not on our agenda that anyone wants to bring to our attention? Hearing, none. No new business, approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. We have one set of minutes. Any changes, comments?
I make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts? Any questions or comments on the contracts?
Nope.
One quick comment. I think $42,000 on Reconstruction of First Way to the police. I would like to know the breakdown of that. And, you know, I remember the days when you put a sawhorse and closed the road on each side. So, you know, and we don't need to know it tonight, but that's just $42,000 on 800 is substantial money. And it wasn't included in the contract.
That's something that we'll certainly take a look at. And I think the issue with First Way was that a lot of people live down there. It's a school area and it was felt that an officer really needed to be there to help guide the traffic through. Otherwise, it could have been a potential free-for-all if people, you know, if there isn't somebody there, people go right around the barricades. So it was something of a safety issue.
No, and that's fine. If, when, if it was times where it wasn't a closed road, you know, but sometimes when we close a road, it sort of...
Yep.
Yeah, okay, then that's fine.
And it was definitely school traffic.
So they were still using it?
We were still using it.
All right.
So the only change here is that there was confusion when the contract was signed as far as police details go. So what, the short answer is that police details were not part of the original contract. This essentially expands the contract to pay for police details associated with the project.
Right. I understand that. And I just want to make sure that that $42,000 is justified, you know, on an $800,000 project, you know? So anyway, that's sort of my question.
Matt, is that something that you feel should be included in all contracts when it wasn't? Or was it something that because of the situation with the schools, we added it on and we wouldn't normally add it on?
I would definitely say that it's project location specific. I mean, with the Nantucket Harbor Schimmel Project, even though they request detail all the time, it doesn't necessarily get filled because the locations that they're in doesn't really require it. But with First Way being such an active throughway between Hooper Farm and Surfside Road, plus the additive of the school and the amount of people that live down there, it just seemed really necessary to have it there.
And they tried to keep it open. If you closed it, you might not need it.
I just want to make sure that we're not, it's 5% on that number. I want to make sure that we're spending the money, taxpayers' money wisely. And in this case, we probably did. But, you know, I've driven by in this, you know, Flora Street. We're doing work on Flora, put two sawhorses up. No one's allowed to go up and down. You know, there's sort of different ways. I want to make sure that we're being cognizant of that when we make these decisions.
I think it's good you ask. I mean, it jumped out at me too. It seemed like a lot. Now it makes sense.
Because even into the summer, there's significant camp traffic, you know? So it gets up.
Make a motion to approve any contracts?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are on to request for acceptance of a surrender of a liquor license for the lobby bar and market at 41 Main Street.
So moved?
Second.
Did you have a question?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a public hearing for a new liquor license for Lemon Press at the same location. I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, so we have a new liquor license application for the location we just accepted a surrender for, 41 Main Street, Lemon Press Market, which is currently operating on Center Street. They are looking to move their operations to a larger facility, having similar type of takeout and some casual organic cafe type of atmosphere, just a larger space from where they are now, applying for a liquor license. I would note this location, per the least, requires that that operate as a restaurant with a liquor license. This is, which kind of precipitated this change. They don't have a liquor license at their current location. They are looking to do something similar, nothing late night till 10:00 PM most nights with the alcohol. I also may note here too that they're looking to open once all of their inspections are done, if approved, even before the liquor license, which they are allowed to do. So other than that, I don't think there's any main change. Any questions? The managers are here too as well.
I have no issues.
None. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And we do have to make the determination.
I just want, one question for Amy. So there aren't any open windows or doors, and I don't think from that.
For that, I think that we might discuss in the entertainment portion. Are you talking about noise?
Yeah.
And that sort of thing? Yeah, they, they have that door, the front door, but, and the two side windows.
It's usually closed, so.
They're not going to be, usually in that downtown area, we require them at 10:00 PM or later and they aren't looking to operate past that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the application? Second?
We do need to make the determination that it's not detrimental to the spiritual.
And include the determination that it's not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the adjacent church. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we will open a public hearing for the same applicant for an entertainment license.
Correct. Same applicant at 41 Main Street. And this is per kind of what we established last year with the previous tenant in that this location is only allowed to have a general background music through the house system. In order to have anything such as live entertainment or anything amplified, they would have to put in a sprinkler system and build, put the building up to code. They're not looking to do that. So this is just to accompany the liquor license with allowance for just background music until 10:00 PM. Again, it's not going to be a late night. I did get comments from the next-door neighbor, Alan Bell, the pharmacist, and issues they had with the previous tenant. I think he agreed he doesn't expect to see much problems with the next tenant, but he just wanted to say that he didn't want the door open at 11:30 with music blasting down Main Street. So I don't think we'll have that problem and asked him to call me should that happen again. So this is, that's all they're asking for in this case.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing, no comments. We'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, our last public hearing is to consider all of the 2018 seasonal liquor license renewals.
Correct.
I'm just going to comment that I made a written disclosure a while ago that we do laundry for a number of these establishments, but it doesn't have any impact.
Yeah, and as I put on here, as we did with the annuals, that this process really is to allow for the issuing of the licenses to take place. This isn't issuing all these licenses, as many people have asked me. It's the legal way to set this process in motion. They have the month of March to sign the renewal forms per the state. They have to go through the inspection process. We require the health permit, we require the COI and all of that prior to issuing of the licenses. There are several that we need to deal with certain issues for. Nothing right now that I need to bring up. If that, something does come up, we would hold a hearing if we had any sort of issue and need to challenge a license. At the time, we do not. I don't have any written complaints of anything. Couple little things that we have to deal with, but nothing to bring up at this time. Any questions?
This is a public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing?
Make a motion?
Do we close the public hearing on this right now? Yes, okay.
So I don't know if there are any questions. You ready for a motion? So I'd make a motion that we approve the 2018 seasonal liquor license renewals as in our, you know, as in our pocket.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And I want to just, the same thing that you did, I want to just disclose. I sell bread to a few of them and drinks to a few of them, but not, nothing that would make it.
Thank you.
Okay, selectmen's reports and comments. So we've talked a little bit about changing our name.
Cool.
And we thought we'd bring it up and actually move forward with doing, doing what's in our power to do. And then there will be a subsequent discussion at town meeting for taking it a step further that was put in by some citizens who are here.
So this is really, again, prior to town meeting, take the initial steps to make the changes.
And we would have town council draft something? And the change, let me, do you want to go over that a little bit?
Sure. I have spoken with town council about this and the idea, I think, is that tonight you vote that you agree you should have a policy to change the name. And specifically to what? And how you'd like the members to be called? And then he will prepare the policy specifically for you to adopt at your next meeting. And I think it would be probably, at this point, a going-forward policy. So for example, pretty soon, we're going to be changing the letterhead of the board's stationery and we would change it to Select Board. We would change everything on the website. And we'll probably do kind of a little bit of an internal inventory of what else we ought to be changing, but more on a kind of a going-forward basis. Like not change, unless you say, for example, there's a plaque in the town building that describes when the building was built from 1965 and it says Board of Selectmen on it. I don't think we're talking about changing things like that. But that would be something to think about.
So for this discussion, I'll make a motion that the board change the name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board and direct town council to develop a policy in that regard to reflect the memo that he'd sent to the town manager and other appropriate elements of a policy.
Could I make a friendly addition potentially? That in addition to changing the name to Select Board, we change the membership names to Select Members and the chairman to Chair.
I will accept that awesome friendly amendment.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a question for discussion. Is this, with the members who support this article, does this help them? Does it hurt? Is it irrelevant? Are you happy with it? Does this stop what they're doing? Does it, or is it totally separate?
I don't think it should. I think it would be getting it in place now. But if you guys want to say something, please do.
Because to me, I'm for this. I think, I think language matters. I think it's, we're heading in the right direction. I like going forward. And then having town administration give us a plan.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My, I just want to answer Jason's question. We see this action as supportive of the article. I think that Article 67 at town meeting, we think it's a great step. We think that it's important to see the change made at all three levels, the charter, the state, and the bylaw. And so we think that that will be part of the discussion at town meeting. And we think you're right, language does matter, Jason, it's important. And what some may see as a small change is actually has, can have big results. And that's what we think here.
I would like to, and I was going to say for clarification, that I, I think, as long as you think as well, this is a positive step forward and support from the board, I would agree that I would like to see the change be a fundamental change and not just a quick stroke of the pen, because I do think it's important, it's absolutely unquestionably important enough to do it at the fundamental level. But I am happy to see that regardless of what happens at town meeting, that we've made the steps.
I agree. I can't, I don't imagine that making this change will cause anyone to think that we don't need to make a fuller, deeper, broader change. So we see this as supportive. Thank you.
We will start the implementation sooner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
I support it. My concern, my concern is, it's one thing to say across three levels and make this change. It's another to implement it before I, like, before a town meeting, I think we should know what it really entails. How much time are we talking? How many days or weeks, et cetera? You know, but I support what we're doing tonight. I support it in theory, but I also, I just, I like to know what we're getting ourselves into before we agree to things.
So what this motion says is we'd ask, we want to see a policy drafted. So that, and when it comes back, that will be...
But the policy is one thing. The steps to implement the policy and what that costs.
I think we should have that conversation then.
Yeah, then we should have to have, we should have that and not, and know what we're approving. That's all I'm asking for.
In regard to this change tonight or in the change for town?
No, tonight, tonight I'm fine, but for, to go further, you know, it, you know, to go further, how long is it going to take? What's it, what is the, you know, what are the implications of doing that? That's all.
Did you want to make a comment?
If I could speak to that. We have been speaking with Senator Seer and Representative Fernandez, who are reaching out to the Mass Municipal Association, as well as the towns similar in size to Nantucket, who have made this change. So we hope to have that information to you very soon. But I just want you to know that we understand that and we respect the town's time and expense. And so we will have that information to you. My understanding from our meeting with Senator Seer is that they don't see it as too onerous of a burden. And one of the great parts of this being a home rule petition is that much of the burden rests with the state, changing it with the state. Their offices have already agreed to write the bill at the state level. So we are moving in that direction of getting you the information that you want.
That would be great.
And have they given you any indication on how long they would estimate the home rule petition might take?
No, but I have that query out to Representative Fernandez.
Because, I mean, if that's a year out, this would at least start the reference.
Well, that's it. Part of the benefit of it being a home rule petition also is that it gives the town time. And there's also a lot of discretion in there about implementation once the article passes. And even the home rule is, even after that's taken care of, the town could have discretion as to the implementation of it based on the burdens in front of the town at the time.
Okay, I think we can move to a vote unless there's anything else.
That's fine.
Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So this is historic.
It is.
I'm just saying.
Any committee reports? Select members?
Select members. We had a regular Affordable Housing Trust Fund meeting. And again, we're moving forward with strategic planning and we've started to put together as well just a little bit of an information sheet about what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund does that we're hoping will be available at town meeting. Really sort of step one is having better communications and helping people understand what we are doing. In addition to helping get a couple people into homes as well.
I did meet with Julian Seer when he was here on Sunday. I actually went to his forum at the UU and then I met with him later briefly. They, they were moving forward in the House today with discussing the short-term rental tax bill. So I'm anxious to see what's happened and what the final form of the bill is. And he expects that we will hopefully see a letter from the Department of Public Health back in regard to our requests for some, all of our questions about the island home. So that was really good information.
Go ahead.
I went to, Remain held an information session on the short-term and long-term bike path that was presented here last week at the Athenaeum on, I believe it was Monday. It was a great turnout, 40, 50 people, really great questions. And they kind of use the program that Mr. McNeil does when you lay out all the plans and people ride on it and really have access to sharing ideas. And it was, there were some questions, but it was really a good reception. And then, were you going to talk about Meals on Wheels?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. So we did Meals on Wheels today. I think once a year, they ask us, the board of select members to, see? It's even hard for me, to do Meals on Wheels for one day. And I had done it four or five years ago and I really kind of reinvigorated how important that service is. I met five of our community members that I've never met before who have wealth of knowledge. And they, you know, 15, 20 minutes talking to somebody who's been here for a long time. It was really, it was great, very rewarding and I think important service. And I think everybody should, should do once a year if they can. It really wakes you up to kind of that hidden part of Nantucket. So I really, I really enjoyed it and want to do it more.
And they're all incredibly complimentary of Meals on Wheels. They're all very thankful.
The food looked good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to give a quick straws update because we had our first sort of early deadline for signing and we had about 30 businesses sign on initially, which is great. Our deadline is going to be April 22nd, which is, or April 23rd, which is Earth Day. We had a fantastic reception. There's been a couple towns we've been working with, Mariah Mitchell and Remain. And one of the really positive things that has come out of it is that a town on the Cape has reached out to us saying, can we, we'd like to do the same. How do we do it? And do you have any information you can share? And the whole premise of working with Mariah Mitchell, one of the things that they brought to the table is working with an organization called CARE that's on the Cape. And they wanted to do exactly that, using Nantucket and our experience as a resource for other towns. So we'll be passing that on. And I also, you know, it was really, it was fantastic to go around and talk to quite a few of the establishments. One in particular, they not only wanted to, as soon as we started talking about straws, they started talking about garbage bags, they started talking about gloves. They're switching to compostable cups. So, you know, Matt also pointed out that we've actually had a ban on straws since 1990.
90 or 93?
Yeah.
93, I think it was when it hit place.
So.
As part of the biodegradable packaging bylaw. There was an alternative.
Yeah, and I think it's one of those, you know, when you know that information might be a little frustrating, things take a little bit longer. But I think, you know, with everything that's going on, there's been a great reception. So just keep trying to get more.
34 years isn't long.
That's young.
I've been at a couple of different meetings where people weren't aware yet about our year-round bus service and they're really excited about it. And I was just logged on to the NRTA. We should try to see about... on to the NRTA. We should try, try to see about getting some kind of a page that shows what the service is going to be exactly, so that we can direct people to that.
We can pass that along to NRTA.
Awesome.
She's, I think we're going to have a advisory board meeting in the next couple weeks.
I just wanted to bring it up now, because people are like really excited about it and have questions. And it's just most helpful to put the map in front of them.
MPDC met on Monday. We're, they were very happy with the different plans for the bike path that you talked about earlier. I, I plugged that we put the, you know, whatever needs to happen as a top priority. I'm not sure, you know, but that's, because I think we should be doing that sooner rather than later. So I made that, you know, sort of made that plea. And that's, oh, we talked a lot about Milestone Road and the turn on Tom Nevers, but, you know, and that was about it.
I believe there was some misconception on the Milestone Road. I think there's a hearing or information session coming next week, that Milestone was going to be narrowed. There was some, some weird language in there. I got a lot of calls, and I wanted, I had to call everybody back and say, it's not going to be narrowed. It was just, the language came out funny. Because when the state came here last week, last year to assess Milestone, they actually said, and it's in the writing, that Milestone was too small. It needs to be bigger. So that, it would, it seemed weird to me that they were making it narrow, but that was, it was either a typo or...
It was just, they, we talked about that quite a bit. They...
Okay.
The way it was written, it was written wrong. It's going to be about 2.6 million is going to be spent on fixing some of the connections and making it safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. The widening and the shoulder, fixing some of the shoulders is not going to happen for a while. That's, that's in a future phase.
It's challenging. When it rains heavily, there's a lot of hydroplanning happening on that road. It's just, it's not, it's not draining well enough. It's not wide enough.
That, well, there was quite a bit of talk about that. Some of it, you know, some of this is a speed issue. Some of this is, and some of the things that were, that it was a 4-3 vote to try to correct, for, for, was, because when I bike out past Tom Nevers, you know, people come off onto that Tom Nevers road, and they're going, you know, 45 or 55, and they don't even slow down to come into the, you know, into that turn. And so, you know, it's, they're going to have to, if they straighten that out a little bit, they're going to have to slow down a little bit to turn. People coming out from Tom Nevers, going to town from the, you know, Tom Nevers, they're looking up Bean Hill, and they're having trouble looking up the hill. So they have to gun it to get into the traffic. So there's a couple weird things that are going on. So we talked quite a bit at that. It was a 4-3 vote to accept the changes recommended by the, you know, consultants to make it safer for bicyclists and slow people down a little bit. But some people think it's fine as it is, and, you know, nine months a year, we don't have to slow down. So it's kind, we sort of had one of those discussions. There's also a lot of talk about the, about the water pooling on the road. And again, some of that is speed, in my opinion, some is speed. And some of it was the work that was done is trapping some of the water. We're having a lot of rain, and some of the water that used to run off when they fixed it five years ago, whatever it was, it's been a little bit tougher since then. So, you know, that was, we talked quite a bit about those things. The other thing I did do is I took the picture that, from Dawn, that was in our packet last week, and I forwarded that to Nat to give to MPDC Planning Board. Because I think, you know, when we, when we look at the bike paths, you know, I think that's a pretty powerful image of what we should be doing. We should be getting people, we should be making it possible for people to get into town safely. And, you know, and I think it could, Washington Street through the, you know, through Behind Marine, all that could be just a beautiful path and get a lot of that traffic right off the street. And so I, and I sent that hoping that that would get people to sort of move, move it a little quicker and not take 34 years, like the straws.
So I had one last thing. It's not seven o'clock yet, so I'll be quick.
You're good.
I want to give, just a little bit of recognition, recognition to Florencia, the public outreach coordinator. I know not everybody in this community is on Instagram, but she's putting out such good information that there are people who do, who are on that social media account. And I was really impressed. And I sent you a note. It's just, it's really good on what's going on, visual. It's just, it was a good job. So I think we're doing, we keep adding layers to how we're getting information out. And this one isn't, it doesn't go everywhere, but we'd keep, this is one of many. So, nice job. Okay, I'm really done then.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.